Can I start again?
I'm sorry. Okay. We need to say that we have what we do. They just mark the other. Roll call.
Just mark the other. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Now, the information to the dots.
So, will you try? Sorry?
Roll call. The general. Same number.
Sure. Yes. 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 Mark them.
Yes. Yes. It's probably not. Second. So, we have like. Ranges those. Same number.
Start it up. Close it. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Now, we have presentations of course. Appreciate the talk. Scholars.
President Johnson. President Obama. For education. Thank you for having me here tonight to deliver this presentation to celebrate and recognize students who have won multiple different recognition awards. And to begin with, starting by talking a little bit about the advanced placement progress. And the advanced placement progress, if you put this perspective. I like to put it in a valid sense. Oftentimes, our students work very hard for the recognition of course or position. You think about students, if it's a big earn average, three college credits for each of the assesses based on career hierarchy. And assuming the average at college costs about $500 for credit. Students this past year earned more than $424,500 from college credits through the advanced placement opportunities. And with the high school, checking significantly, sure, the course is very competitive. So, a program offers several AP scholar awards to recognize extra students who have entered college to achieve in the courses of exams. And in addition to receiving certificates tonight, this achievement is acknowledged on any AP score of accepted colleges the following fall. And this year, we're going to be recognizing 64 AP scholars for this special recognition. And then we start with AP scholar award. An AP scholar award is rated students who receive scores of three or higher on a rating or more against some exams in that course as students this year. And students who have checked in with us. I'm going to call them to the microphone. They're going to get their name. They're going to get the school they've been in. And any co-secondary opportunities they're in. Will they go to another parent? Will they go to college? Will they run into the workforce? Say what should you do? Where are you going? And we can talk about the future. And we will start with quick questions.
Hi. Uh, my question is, I grew up in Rose City High School. And after that, I will come to go to college. That's all right. Colin. It's about Luwak.
Oh, that's so long. She is at Rose City with the CC.
Kevin Gabriel. Obey. I love it. When you tell a lie. Nice. I'm David Taylor. And the last group of AP scholars, Sammy Wayers. I'm Sammy Wayers. He's at Indiana University. I'm a pharmacist. Since past week, all AP scholars have purchased university tickets. Sing a prayer for a lot. And we appreciate it. I'm your host. You get more next kids, they have to get up there and tell me. Our next scholars are AP scholars of the highest. And these students received an average score of 2.5 on all. They stayed in the school three or higher on four or more of these exams. And we had a good lead of scholars this year. And for the start of that, one, fire. Harper Sizer. Hi, Harper Sizer Norris. I'm bringing my husband, my sister, and her fiance, Kevin Corbin here. Hey, the next group are AP students of the station. And these students have gotten a 3.5 on all these exams and scored three or higher on five or more. Mr. Dick. Group two. I'm sorry. I thought you said. Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Um, the AP scholars from station, the greatest students who received an average score of 3.5 on all. They stayed in the school three or higher on five of these exams. We had 13 of those scholars this year. We're going to recognize two of them. We're going to start with Rohit Blackstone.
Hello.
And the last student tonight in this section, Jack Hall.
Hello. Jack Hall. First school. And I'm at the state department. Associate of biology.
We have a national merit scholars. And starting with the national merit, American student. And today, to give perspective, this year, approximately 1 million plus 10,000 juniors all across the United States were linked at their college, taking PSAT, national merit challenge, qualified test. And other students, 50,000 high scores are selected based on index scores. 34,000 or 30,000 are recognized as remaining students. So that's 34,000 out of 1.5 million students who are committed on their outstanding academic promise. So, a lot of them looking for thousands of competitive students. There's 16,000 who are recognized as national merit second finalists. And so that's greatest works. So, this year, our national merit American student is Jimmy Zou. And he's not with us tonight. It's a bit of a recognition. So, each year, with the February 8,000 of that 1.5 million, our national merit finalists here chosen from that 16,000 pocketed semi-finalists. And again, this student is not with us, but I want to announce that it's been first student. We are back here. So, we also have four new awards that the college board has presented this year. And these new awards are announced, were announced by the college board to award academic honors, honor, recognition students. And there are four categories. The national African-American recognition program, the national Hispanic recognition program, the national indigenous recognition program, and the national rural small town recognition program. So, to be eligible for these three programs, students have to meet the following eligibility requirements. They have to have a 3.5 GPA or higher at the time they are issued their application. They apply for this program and this recognition. And they have to be weighted and unweighted, cheap weights. They have to have an appropriate address in the United States. They must identify as either African-American, Hispanic, indigenous, or ten high school, rural area, or small town. And the sophomores must obtain the PSAT, national merit, qualified test in the fall 2021 for these two state AP exams in their senior year. The juniors must obtain the PSAT in the spring of 2021 for taking the national merit qualified test as well, or these two state AP exams in eighth, ninth, or tenth. So, there are the eligibility requirements. And this year. When we're looking at this, the sophomores and juniors are scored eligible. They score 80% of those qualifying exams within the state. Sophomores and juniors are also scored eligible. They score three or higher on those two or more AP exams. So, this year, for our national African-American recognition awards, it's cap four. And tonight, three are with us. And we will start with Kelly McKinney.
My name is Kelly McKinney. I live in the high school. And I'm meant to go to college.
Okay, for the second, our community we're going to recognize, Tadeo Obey. Also, the second, our community, Marshallus, DeBauer. Okay. We also have one student this year that earned the national Hispanic recognition award. And he's not with us tonight, but it's Dandy Alon. We'll talk a little bit about our next group of recognition spend. That's the Houskett Plus students. We talked a little bit about the Houskett Plus during the 2021, 2022 school year. Eight hundred and thirty-nine students took advantage of taking a college course or multiple courses whilst in the high school. They took 2,000 or 88 college courses. Now, we can say today, this means AP students. These students assume the average course is a three college credit course and average credit is 500 for credit. Those college courses add up to more than $3,430,500, which is a cost in a classroom of 350,000 dollars. So, that is quite savings for families of students that are going to do this. And hopefully, what this does, is we all worry about college debt. And if we call it debt, this minimizes that debt. And we're very grateful for your love and support for that. We have multiple students this year that have earned their associate's. Which means they got two years of college under their belt. And strictly contract fees. They go anywhere to state or higher, to all the publics, and they get a file. But all those credits are here in transfer to that college. Okay, so this is a pretty big deal. And we have two students that are here with us tonight. And the first is Cameron Ross.
Hi, my name is Christopher. And I'm going to take your name.
That is so serious. Obviously, not only did she burn her associate's career, the first thing she said when she walked off the table was, maybe I'm not that stupid. Okay. The second student tonight is Rachel Heschel. Congratulations for receiving your grant. Congratulations to all students, families, and for sure, for the president. And congratulations on our success. For that person.
Okay. Yes. Those who are here for that whole story are certainly welcome. We have work to do on top of those struggling places, the evil cornballs.
Let's see if you can be back to your slides.
That's my special follow-up. Thank you for having me speak tonight. It's exciting to share with you that was one of the most important presentations about students. Are you aware of the GPs they have? Basically, it's that not only do you stop, it's also just useful to graduate your degree. You have a lot of changes more. Lots of like, so I want to share a little bit about the topics. So, in the spring of 2022, we offered two courses. Spilled the workplace in a local process. We currently have an introductory Monday course and a state test of course. All of our courses are on 26th and 80th. There are two meetings, so we love a night, a Wednesday night. From a rock, from the fourth, to the, to the mat. We serve over 60 adults today in those courses. And our spring courses, we had a 92% attendance rate for those that, I think, were unemployed, were unemployed, meaning they had skills, they had practice, because they wanted to learn what they were doing, and they didn't see how they could accomplish more in their career. So, the goal of our program is to provide a strong foundation in the end-of-year field to recover our thoughts, our goals forward. And the way that it works, the video is, they know they look like, but their job, what they're doing now, is those of them have responsibilities. They have the elements, they have renting, and housekeeping responsibilities and quick work to move the market. So, we have a short-term training that can get them to this proficient level, where they can be hired, rented, trained, and on their own. And in the end-of-year field, with that all over, your faculties, all the options, we're going to accomplish those forward. So, tonight, you're going to have a little chance to finish, perhaps, to see out all these students. But that's part of the topics. Um, our AP, really, our AP space, yes, we have a property that we have a self-registered space, so we're buying a unique learning opportunity for our students. And our AP for your support and kind of providing energy, both staying at home, and artists, not only helping us to perform. What that's allowed us to do this year is we open four days a week. So, we're open to space for Fridays from 10:00 to 1:00. And Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, and we have our AP space. And in the month of October, we have been able to host 13 different events and groups in our AP space while still keeping our restaurant, but it's a, um, infection at home business, not so far. Both of them, several months last year. Yeah, AP space. Yeah, AP space is our reservation only, and it's official there. And then we also have a tape day venue, so that information's up there as well. So, we have the, 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 we have people share that this is our AP space. And then, as you know, we already have requests and accounts for everything. We're really excited about that. But three different components to that experience. One is the AP space, which we, we're going to be able to utilize to serve the school this year, to serve our AP and the current, the common, and hospital students. Since we're right here, we already have several requests. We're really excited about that space, which we can host the next, we can host the needs, we can host PTA events and so forth around these rooms. And then, we are going to expand the AP program. So, I know houses don't need right now, so I'm really excited about that. That's started a little bit, anyone, obviously. So, and as we know, there's less of a, our only space, we provide us here. We have a special, we have a, 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 we have a network, so we're excited about that program and having PA certification, which will set our students apart, so they can go to work in residential or commercial AP. And then, because of the main, we're going to add additional AP program. We have, we have, we have this issue that we're allowed to, to verify, and AP program is beyond us these. And we know it's central, right now, just with our hospitals, I'm sure about 4,000 nurses. One of our business partners, we're short 150 state test nurses systems right now. This is one of our business partners, or seven healthcare centers in Central Michigan. So, we're ready for the shortage. We pick up a summer plan. We, right now, have a summer best community company, we're changing, we're changing. We see this, it's basically six students this summer that are listening. And our junior class, like, has seen the year, and worked, and seen the year. But we really need a second comparison program to serve our students. And they're going to be able to also serve the AP and public care industry. That's such a great need. Get our students out working, and then they can, in many cases, have a, 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 a work, or they can receive courses, and they're going to be prepared. Um, and then, this evening, when we are here, it does, we have, we are invested virtual vendors. So, if you're interested, come down, see how it works. Um, have an action. And then also, try to get virtual vending. I'm pretty glad this is the way to drive it, you know, competition, but it's actually a fun place, you can actually see how some of this is cool, and some of this is so fun. So, we're, we're also, we're also. and some of this is going, so we're, and I don't know if you've all, but also, so, thank you for your time. What we can, to items, action, to school, to this part, you know, the students, so. Uh, if you guys are asking, uh, so the question is, would that save the earth's best jobs to come along? And I have the first of the case, well, the J R's, yes, to charge us with the way we work. So, um, of those, um, here's the P D by, um, here's the business, and first, we saw soldiers. Second, and it's the best, all right. There was the second, Paulwell, question asked, the number four.
Smartville.
Yes.
Paulwell, yes. Yes.
Yes. Now, to try and first step.
Thank you, Travis Evanson. I'm a board of judges, and we have six personnel items involving one hundred and seven persons. This includes eight certificate reservations, two certificate changes in appointments status, one hundred and fifty certificate appointments, four classified reservations, five classified changes in appointments status, and three classified appointments. Have to read the exact nine or something.
Second, Paulwell, the question more asked, the number four.
Schreiber, yes, Paulwell, yes, Spolso, yes, Smartville, Johnson.
Yes, next question, have items discussion, or we're clean. The number four, okay, which is, Paulwell, second, Smartville.
Paulwell, yes, Smartville, Spolso, yes, Schreiber, yes, Johnson.
Yes, it's all coming.